So guys, if we could, um, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting for April 10, 2025 to order. Uh, we had a stoplight issue and some Capitol Boulevard traffic issues, but now we're here safely. Uh, so we will start the meeting and I will turn things over to Commissioner Johnson to lead this invocation.
Well, let's pray. Uh, holy father, please be with us tonight as we go through uh the town of meetings. Please be those with those who are lost and those who are sick and need your guiding hand. Please be with Commissioner Wiggins, uh, as he, uh, as he tries to be healthy. Lord, please be with those, uh, who need you and use their, use your hands to guide us and be with us as we, as we get through the evening. Ask these things in Jesus' name, pray amen.
Amen. Uh, next up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. So I hear motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second, all right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? Uh, any opposed? That motion carries. Uh, next up is uh, public hearings. Uh, item A under public hearing is uh, item A annexation petition 2025 dash two, Town of Youngsville Holden Road acreage. I'll go ahead and open the hearing to the public as of seven oh two and turn things over for staff.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a pretty unique one as it is the Town of Youngsville annexing land into the Town of Youngsville. It is a parcel that we own fee simple that is between the Holden Creek Preserve neighborhood and the Conyers property immediately to the west. It's shown here in red. It's on the south side of Holden. And it would make the Conyers property contiguous with the town limits, um, which would bump the city limits out to fish stallings. It doesn't change anything. There's no tax value on it. We don't pay taxes to ourselves or the county, uh, but it would officially make it ours, ours.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, having heard that, I will open it up to any comments from the public in regards to the annexation petition 2025 dash two. Have, having, ma'am, if you would, yeah. No, if you wanna step up here and just state your name and address, you can ask as many questions as you want. Look, if anybody can put you on the spot real quick, it's gonna be me. So have, have right at it. We're all family, so you take your time.
Uh, we did this when Richland Hills came in. We also did this when Mason Oaks came in and it's, I live in Rolling Acres. And uh, we just wanted to know how much of the Conyers property. There was some townhomes going to be built up the front behind Rolling Acres on the left as you come in. You know where I'm talking about? I couldn't make out on this map. It was so scary.
Um, I, I didn't catch the lady's name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my apologies.
Do they? Mary McCary.
The, the parcel in question is actually mostly a creek and will not be developed whatsoever at all. There are some plans that the Conyers property may or may not engage in, but at this time, we don't have any approved site construction plans for pieces out there.
That's what I thought, and I wasn't sure. I think it's down where the pond is over there.
Hmm.
There is a pond over there at the back of the preserve.
This is northwest of the pond.
Okay, northwest pond. That seal coming up toward us in behind Rolling Acres.
It is not contiguous with Rolling Acres.
God, this is on.
Between it and Rolling Acres.
This is on the other side of the right away, believe the transit.
I was gonna say, I think this is the right away.
Yeah.
It's the utilities right away. They're the, the town owns a piece of, if I'm not mistaken. It's like kinda in that. I'm looking at a people map. Yeah, that lines up like right there within it. Yep, uh, yeah.
So it's not, you're not gonna try to annex all of it, just one portion of it?
The portion that's being annexed is a hundred percent owned by the Town of Youngsville. We are, we are, we are annexing our own land. There's no, no one is annexing anything else. It is our stuff. There's no forcible annexation. That's not something that is even being considered. It's, it's something, we signed our own paperwork to annex our own property.
This, this would be more of like just a housekeeping scenario.
Is the Holden Preserve or that housing development coming on over? Will it be used for that or just the annexation? I mean, you'll be selling it to someone else?
No, I'm not making this clear. The town owns this land.
Yeah, I know.
It's not in the city limits.
Okay.
It's our land. It's not, it's not for homes. It's not for streets. It's not for uh, any development. It's, it's, that it's, there's a creek that runs through the middle of it.
Right.
It is very unlikely to ever be developed. Now, what is it gonna look like in 300 years? Who knows?
I don't think.
The, there are no development plans for this lot. It is just cleaning up a paperwork exercise. Um, just like the room that you're standing in is both owned by the Town of Youngsville and in our city limits.
Okay. I just wasn't sure. I couldn't tell by the map exactly where you were talking about. And I knew previous, uh, that there had been a whole lot of townhomes. And I didn't know what happened there and I didn't know how much of Conyers, because I think it goes almost all the way to the road.
This does not go to the road.
Okay. Yeah, I know where you're talking about. My children used to ride maybe stuff around. Long time ago.
Understood, understood. Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're good. Again, it's just uh, this is more of a, a housekeeping paperwork scenario where it's land that we, we've already owned. It's just not been, quote unquote, in the town land. So this is, this, there's no development that's gonna happen there. Yeah, maybe some walking trails or sidewalks at some point, but other than that, the town's not getting rid of it.
But no development?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
All right, you're very welcome.
For the record, can I have your address?
I mean, for the record, may I have your address? One forty Rolling Acres Road. Thank you. Did you get them? Yes.
All right, um, so having heard that, do we have any additional uh, comments from the public?
Mr. Mayor. Moss, two seventeen North College Street. This is just perler explanation of what this tract is. If, if there was ever a piece that was just verbally holding the world together, this one is probably it. It, it's, it's a beautiful tract. Has, has been stated, a creek running through a, a major electric transmission line. Uh, it was created uh, by frankly, uh, when Triangle Town Center was built thirty years ago. And they, they needed some wetland mitigation property. And so along the creek, a series of five of what I would call artificial beaver dams were created. Uh, and, and uh, and so it was for wildlife and environmental purposes. But for whatever reason, their obligation to do that had a limited term. They've been ten years, something like that. And then when it expired, the developers of Triangle Town Center who'd actually bought this tract in fee, sold it to uh, the previous owners. The town had an opportunity to acquire it that time, at that time for free. It's beyond me why that, why they didn't take it. Uh, and I think y'all will be to be applauded for taking it now. But it, but it, it's a wonderful uh, walking trail wildlife piece. I think never unlikely to be, ever be developed. Certainly does not join rolling acres.
Thank you for that, Jim. All right, uh, did we have any additional comments from the public? All right, hearing none. I will go ahead and close the hearing as of seven eleven and move into citizens' comments. Madam Club, did we have anyone who signed up for citizens' comments?
We did have someone sign up, Mr. Mayor Mason Rizzo of two oh four East Franklin Street.
Mr. Rizzo, floor is yours.
Okay.
Okay. Duke Commissioners got the memo.
I didn't get it.
Your Easter album.
Sorry.
No, look, if you might send excuses, do what you've done all day and then still get here.
Mr. Manager, I'm so sorry, but it doesn't appear to be picking up what's actually on my desktop. It doesn't look like it's mirroring.
That would be a computer setting, man. I don't, I'm not sure.
Usually F eight is the display. You can choose duplicate or extend. Say that, and I don't have F eight on this thing. I think you gotta control eight. Yeah.
I'm so sorry, can you save these two, please?
Can you try and drag the PowerPoint to the window side left or right on your screen?
Yeah.
Start your car today. It's extended, not.
Oh, I see. I'm so sorry. I, I see what's happening. It's picking up this monitor as expected. I really do apologize. Um, hello, Mason Rizzo, two and four East Franklin Street. Thank you, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Commissioners, staff. Uh, I'm joined by some of my neighbors as well as one of my friends who has expressed uh, interest in acquiring some property in the north block of the downtown center. Um, we wanna begin again by thanking uh, the Town of Youngsville for the conviction you showed in resolution to the speed limit reduction. Uh, we truly do appreciate that. Uh, since the resolution, we, we've been lucky to, um, we, we've been lucky to, um, not have uh, any more issues. We are still running a few uh, concerns that do keep us pretty unsafe. Um, i- i- in part, of course, we are still dealing with, um, we are still dealing with dangerous conditions that threaten not only, um, not only the uh, people in this room, but the hundreds of other souls who, um, who call our area home. Um, you see my neighbor here crossing the street, uh, Mr. Boddy's wife. While those of us living in dangerous streets do appreciate the work you've done so far lowering the speed limit, we unfortunately are not accomplishing our collective mission to make the streets safer. Um, as you can see from, from this video here, uh, my neighbor Irma is moments away by being killed uh, by this very truck, um, speeding down North Cross Street to get to the stoplight. We assume that he's probably going about forty some odd miles an hour. Um, next slide, please. Um, recently, we had one of the administrators come to the neighborhood on business. He said, uh, he didn't understand why people chose to cut through the neighborhood uh, when they have to go through multiple stop signs at fifteen miles an hour. Unfortunately, as you can see here, um, they do it because they can. Um, for perspective, this is me going fifteen miles an hour. Um, it, it's not particularly exhilarating. It's not supposed to be. Um, you know, one of our challenges, of course, that there's no real indication that this is a neighborhood. Uh, it should be obvious, of course. I think it is to everybody in this room. Um, but let's say it isn't. There isn't anything reminding uh, drivers that share the streets with us, um, that, that our pets, our families, our children, uh, use this space as, as, as a residential area where we bike, where we walk, where we live. Um, you know, we, we have trouble. These are nineteen foot wide residential streets and the usage of these streets is a shared responsibility. Um, my neighbors and I are asking uh, everyone here to help hold the commuters accountable who cut through uh, our neighborhood because their behavior frankly is uh, outside of the interests of public safety. Next slide, please. Um, you know, uh, of course, we understand that people are bypassing Main Street um, a- a- at a time when Youngsville PD, as much as they do and they do so much for us, um, can't be there to help us enforce uh, this issue. Once again, our pets and our children don't know better, but these drivers do. Um, you know, tonight, our community is asking for some additional help and strategic consideration to enforce the speed limit that you set in November and significantly reduce the likelihood that someone in this room or someone that we love uh, is gonna be killed in front of our homes. Um, next slide, please. Remember, you know, we cross this intersection time and again. You've seen women with strollers. You've seen us with our pets. Um, next slide, please. Our community requests and, and needs the board to assist our, our friends at the YPD, um, in, in enforcing the expected speed limit by implementing any number of traffic calming designs outlined in the Town of Youngsville's traffic calming policy. But we also request that if no suitable methods currently outlined in the policy apply to Winston Street, East Franklin or North Cross Street as a place where we could pilot such things, we ask that you consider softening the collective position on vertical deflectors. We ask that you consider the fact that the benefits of decreased traffic speeds on residential streets far outweigh the maintenance needs on town vehicles. It's not to subtract from our brains in the first responder unit. This is simply a plea for us to have some uh, uh, flexibility in the way that we enforce uh, speed limits on the streets, please. Um, the thousands of vehicles on Winston, East Franklin and North Cross Street are routinely putting our lives in danger and not just because we have to share the streets as pedestrians, though that does put us in immense danger, as you can see here, uh, when we cross the street. Next slide, please. Um, we, we need your help slowing down the drivers, especially the thousands of commercial vehicles uh, cutting through our neighborhood daily, and we especially need to keep them from driving on the shoulders. Ours is a community, uh, of, of, of continuous cycle of drivers speeding on our streets, using ways, using Google Maps, which aren't updated, though I've tried plenty times, as I know our, our friends here have. And the drivers are utterly oblivious to the dangers that they put ourselves in. Here, this is not just a clear violation of the ordinance, but a totally inattentive driver uh, in our neighborhood. Again, this is where we cross our streets. Um, and then, you know, it goes without saying, only a couple of days later, we, we, well, we had it happen again. Um, so next slide, please. We, we think that we have a preponderance of evidence to suggest that the same speeders also drive in our yards to forego having to slow down uh, and, and, and mitigate our concerns. Please remember that we're bound by Youngsville Code of Ordinance is six point two oh three to participate in trash pickup and we have to put our trash and recycling on the curb. We're also bound by Youngsville Ordinance of six point one of four point two to ensure that our yards are well maintained up to the streets so as not to constitute a detriment, danger or hazard to the health, safety, morals and general welfare of the inhabitants of our town. Next slide, please. Uh, the, I, I, we believe that this is a confluence of evidence that participating in the expectations of the town is dangerous as our neighborhood currently serves as a bypass. Um, next slide, please. Uh, I, I, I pose a hypothetical. I know some of you live in this community. How safe would you feel if this was inches away from you weed eating, mowing uh, your grass or otherwise just trying to keep your yard beautiful for the sake of our community? Next slide, please. By simply existing in this neighborhood, we are in constant risk anytime we cross the street, mow our grass, check our mail and clean up the trash that unfortunately does constantly end up in our yards just as a measure of it being a thoroughfare. We ask that you direct efforts and resources as outlined by the current traffic calming policy to enforce safer driving practices while you continue your efforts on the bypass. Let's also not forget that plenty of research suggests that adding roads to ease congestion does not correlate to safer streets all the time and further any connection to ninety six and especially the shortest route, which will continue to be the north block of the downtown center, will likely make the side streets less safe as is because naturally a bypass will occupy more first responder resources. We aren't simply asking to reduce traffic on our neighborhood streets. Plenty of, of individuals here have reminded us that the north block is meant to be used as a thoroughfare. What we are asking is that you put resources and attention to enforcing the fifteen mile an hour speed limit that you worked so diligently to pass last year. We understand uh, that budget season is here and recognize that you may feel somewhat constrained by pipe press pressure. Youngsville, of course, isn't lacking in assets. We are no longer a poor town as we were when I was growing up. And we believe that this project qualifies as dire need and the purpose of government to protect its citizens. If you need funding ideas, you should talk to me. I probably have about twenty thousand dollars worth of uh, evidence of ordinance violations sitting around on PowerPoint slides. I think we could probably make about twelve hundred bucks a day uh, if we were citing ordinances, but of course you can't because we wouldn't expect you guys to be able to put someone out there at all times. I have, uh, again, a deck with examples just like this. If there's no statute of limitations on those ordinances. Further, I have formally offered myself to the town manager to volunteer to paint crosswalks, stop lines and super graphics on North Cross and East Franklin as a show of good faith, uh, a- a- and to offset the average required by the town to make our neighborhood safer. I'm encouraged to remind you all that uh, uh, this is not the same Youngsville when these streets were paved in the mid twentieth century. Times have changed and of course, the street design must change with it. Um, next slide, please. As a community, we spend a lot of time referring to our sister city, the town, that's ten minutes, the Town of Youngsville, um, and.
How much, how much more do you have?
Uh, I have about seventy seconds.
I'll go ahead, go ahead.
As a community, we spend a, a lot of time referring, thank you, Mr. Page, to uh, our sister city, the Town of Wake Forest. When you voted to take control and ownership of Main Street, the direct example that Mr. Page used to assist in your decision-making was White Street. White Street is safe in large part due to vertical deflectors. It boasts, right, raised crosswalks with speed humps as well as other traffic calming measures uh, on the tertiary streets that, that, that surround it. Um, we, we'd like to point out the vast similarities in the Wake Forest traffic calming policy and that of our own and note that we have a similar, that they have a similar moratorium on vertical deflectors, but do make exceptions for White Street in the Commerce District and Tyler Run Neighborhood in the Residential District. Um, lastly, the Tyler Run Neighborhood, like that of the north block of the Youngsville Downtown Center, is a notorious cut through for drivers getting from Durham Road to Main Street at ninety eighth, looking to bypass the seminary and downtown district, a pedestrian uh, dense area not unlike ours. We understand that our request requires thoughtful analysis, creative problem solving and financial resources. That said, our plea to you is no different than your very plea to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. We are asking for common sense measures and collective resource allocation to keep all of us in this room and the many who couldn't be there tonight safe from the constant dangers of through traffic. We really appreciate your time. Um, I don't, I'm, I'm happy to continue um, with, with dialogue as we can.
Um, let us digest some of this stuff, um, and work with staff. Um, obviously, you know, we've done a tremendous amount of work already with, you know, with where we were versus where we are now.
We agree.
Um, and there's, I think there's some funding opportunities coming up in October for us to help, at least with the bypass piece of it, but this is something that we can definitely um, discuss with staff and, and to see what else we can do. Um, the understanding was that fifteen miles an hour certainly helped a little bit.
Very much.
Um, so, and maybe just to bring attention to it, maybe we look at flashing stop signs in the intersection as a short term, um, just to kind of figure some stuff out, but we, we appreciate, we hear everything that you guys are saying. I promise we do. Um, and it's not for lack of triumph. I guarantee you every day I'm talking to him. We're all talking amongst ourselves, um, trying to figure all this stuff out, so.
And we true, and we true, we truly appreciate all the hard work, the effort and the decency that we get from town staff. Um, it's not lost on us. Um, but in the sake of community spirit, we do feel obligated to continue to fight for a good cause together and we wanna make sure that, that if, if nothing else, we can be partners in that.
As you said, hey, we're your representative, so if you can't come up here and, and give us a grievance and, and speak your piece and we're not doing what we're hired to do, so.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
This is why that I feel like is really important for Mason to show. Can I just rewind and show one thing? Is that not allowed?
How, how much time is it gonna take? Like, I'll, I'll, I'll look at thirty seconds. Let's go.
Mr. Mayor, one piece of that, uh, I've worked on with Mr. Rizzo. He did ask about doing crosswalks and painting the stop bars and such, um, but because the roads are both being repaved this budget year, meaning in the next two and a half months.
Right.
Um, it was, I, I made the request that he wait until after they're repaved to do anything that he would do out there. And one thing that we might ask for is for him to create any designs that might potentially be crosswalk designs that we would uh, want out there. I know that um, Mayor Pro temp Brain has seen some different designs uh, through his work with Campo and uh, might be interested in reviewing some of those. If that's something we wanna do.
This is it. This is just, I think our neighbor getting.
No, we saw, we saw that one. We did see that.
Sorry, I was back here constantly.
That was the one that made me cringe probably the most. People just.
Thank you.
Outstanding. All right, um, did you need help? Did you need to help them? I know Mason's an IT. I don't need him hacking into our server. Okay, all right. Good deal. Um, any additional uh, citizens' comments uh, outside of the traffic concerns in, in that area? All right, uh, hearing none. We'll move along into the consent agenda. Uh, you got items A through I here. Uh, what is the pleasure of the board in regards to the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
On agenda. Second, all right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda's good. Moving along into old business. Item A, adopt annexation ordinance 2025 dash two, Town of Youngsville Holden Road acreage. Action request that here is to approve annexation ordinance 2025 dash two.
Move to approve annexation ordinance.
Second, all right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Um, item seven is new business. Uh, presentation of proposed fiscal year in 2026 budget. Mr. Page.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a copy of the proposed twenty four year 2026 budget. Um, and I am presenting it to you now. We'll post it on the website tomorrow for anybody that's interested in um, getting a copy of it.
This is Bill King-Gasmon for this.
Uh, and if you wouldn't mind um, setting a public hearing for it in May. Um, as the board requested, there is a tax cut included in this one. It drops the tax rate down to uh, fifty four cents per um, valuation.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for that. Uh, so the action request that here is to set a public hearing on proposed budget for May eighth, twenty twenty five. But here, motion?
Motion.
Second, all right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, that is set for May eighth, twenty twenty five. Uh, reports and other business. Uh, I get to go first. Uh, I want everybody to um, know that the Easter egg hunt was moved from Luddy. It will now be a faith and that is at eleven AM Saturday.
Yes.
Eleven AM Saturday. Um, again, Faith Baptist, it's always a fun time. Uh, Faith is a tremendous partner with the town. Whenever we know we're gonna have inclement weather, they always um, pick up the slack for us and allow us to use their facilities. So we appreciate that. Uh, Youngsville Cleanup Day is set for Saturday, April twenty sixth, and that begins, uh, the registration piece of that starts at eight AM at Burr Barrel. Um, the, the guys and, and guys with Kiwanis Club always do a tremendous job of, of helping the town with um, the city portion and the uh, you know, extraterritorial jurisdiction piece of it. So I'm always excited to try to clean up and, and make this place beautiful and amazing and all the additional attributes. So, um, I do have a letter here where we have a Youngsville resident that earned Eagle Scout uh, that I'll be sending out here pretty soon. And outside of that, I think that is it for me. So I will turn things over to Commissioner.
I know all day I had something in my head to say tonight, but no longer in my head, so I have nothing.
You've had a long day and a long time getting you, so uh, we appreciate that. Uh, Commissioner Percy.
Um, next, there's day, the seventeenth, yeah, seventeen. Um, the chamber is hosting a monthly mingle here in Youngsville at a power GPU. Uh, they build custom computers and equipment and such. Um, I can't remember someone, I think they said someone is catering, I think Cannon is catering. Um, but yeah, so there's gonna be a monthly mingle. It's gonna be a lot of local business owners. Um, to kind of put it on people's radar if you'd like to come. I think it's four to six.
Okay. Anything else? That's all. All right, Mr. Brain.
All right, so we had the Campo meeting three weeks ago and um, there was, hot topic was the US one total study. The news reporter showed up. That's where some had one of the Campo meetings, uh, getting excited. But um, unfortunately, we did not see a full study presented to us. Um, we were expecting the study to, to be provided at that. We were expecting the study to be provided at that meeting. We did get a high level presentation on some of the options they looked at, some of the financing options and one diversion analysis, one section of the US One corridor. And we've been asking Campo staff when we're going to get the report. And so far, we have yet to receive any update. At the last meeting, we directed Campo staff to conduct a public outreach for input on the toll study and to have something ready for us at the May meeting. So I'm hopeful that we will get some more information on what we will be addressing in May. So we're keeping after that. But there's definitely some questions that we have about it. You know, we see a lot of positives in it, but we do have some concerns that we want to at least have addressed and evaluated in the study. Next meeting is next Wednesday. Campo has the Blueprint for Safety Summit coming up, May fourteenth, I believe it is. It's at eight thirty in the morning. I'm trying to work it in with my schedule. I can at least attend. Looking forward to that. And that's all I have.
And I did forget, congratulations are in order to Commissioner Brain for winning the mayor's Madness, March Madness bracket. He chose, I think he chose like I did, the Florida Gators to win. And as long as that other team that I'm not fond of didn't win, then I was excited. So I'll be taking Commissioner Brain out to lunch for winning that, so.
Totem Angus Barn.
It won't be Angus Barn. It'll be somewhere Youngsville. Sorry, I need to sip on some water real quick. Oh, this knows no bounds. Okay. Commissioner Johnson.
I have no memory.
All right, turn things over to our esteemed legal counsel, Ms. Kate Barber Jones.
Your public business report.
All right, and we'll go with staff? And no, I'm going to get to him. I didn't miss him.
I just wanted to bring the flags to everyone's attention. We received a few flags at our birthday celebration on March seventeenth, excuse me, May seventeenth. And the one, the American flag flew over the US Capitol and is a gift to the town of Youngsville from Senator Tom Tillis. The North Carolina flag flew over the North Carolina Capitol and is a gift from Senator Lisa Barnes. We also have a shadow box and a plaque for a flag that was flown over both the US Capitol and the North Carolina Capitol that is seen in the photo on the cover of the budget. Will eventually be hung up in this room by someone with a better sense of placing than I have. And will eventually have that wall covered with the awards and things that we win.
Good deal. Anything else?
I didn't have any other business.
Madam Clerk, nothing there? Okay, we do have a very special individual that just joined us. So Representative Winslow, if you, did you have anything that you wanted to add to the meeting? You absolutely can.
Still excited, could wait. Play him maybe like we can next month, but we have to back in time. Thanks so much for your time. And the flag that I got for you guys was on that over both capitals, so the DC Capitol and everybody else, they just kind of do what I.
Yes, you do. Absolutely.
And in that same tone, I've got something. Has something made for you. The subsequent centennial.
Just one fifty.
Passes out for you here. Good to see your body. You awesome. Thanks, brother. I look so nice tonight. All right. Okay. That's cool. Now look in the bottom right hand corner. See that?
I dig it.
So I thought that you guys need an official embossing. So for the hundred fifty anniversary. And you could do your own seals and stamps on stuff that you sent out to celebrate. And so we've had it made specifically for you. And then we're going to have the seal itself recorded along with anything else that you guys want to put in at the end of the year at the state archives. So we work with them. They agree that whatever you want to put in there, put it all together.
Yes, outstanding. We appreciate this. This is really cool.
I was so excited. I'll give you.
I know Emily, Emily's going to enjoy being able to stamp those things. And I think it adds a, actually, before we send this out, that can be the first seal that goes on that, so. Nifty. And for those that don't know, and I give him a lot of praise a lot of times, but Representative Winslow has truly been tremendous for the town of Youngsville. When we talk about needs and wants and things in between and just needing assistance from a bypass standpoint or just ordinary day to day stuff with getting new playground equipment, this gentleman right here has been amazing for us. So we appreciate everything you do for us. And this is just a small token of that, but it's still just that cool factor that we love and we appreciate. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I was so excited. I had to go to Kitchell. They met. And then just come next month. It's a quick meeting and I I headed south at fifty six miles an hour just to get.
Luckily, luckily for you, luckily for you, the citizens' comments tonight, if they hadn't had technical difficulties, we would have already been at this. We thank you so much. All right, so if there's nothing else for myself and staff, there is no need to go into closed session. So the next thing on the agenda is to adjourn. Do I hear motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.